Meeting to order. Welcome to the Cape Elizabeth Town Council regular monthly meeting of May 11th, 2009. I would ask the clerk pro temp slash town manager to please read the roll call.
Thank you, Jim. Chairman Row?
Here.
Councillor Becker?
Here.
Councillor Jordan?
Here.
Councillor Lennon?
Here.
Councillor McKenney?
Here.
Councillor Sherman?
Here.
Councillor Swift-Kiata?
Here.
But in the town clerk is busy preparing for the election tomorrow. Why she's not here. We had about 500 absentees that need to be processed this evening, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I declare the ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Town council reports and correspondence. Ann?
Thank you. I have two things to report. One is that we had the final meeting of the Communications Committee, subcommittee, this afternoon, and we will be, that's the committee that has to do with the town website, cable TV policies, and so on and so forth. We will be providing a report to the rest of the council. There will be two items coming before the council at the June council meeting, so. And then, secondly, I just wanted to report that from last Friday until, I'm sorry, last Wednesday until yesterday, I was at the National League of Cities meeting in Louisville, Kentucky. It was a meeting on a risk management training program, and it was really excellent to get together with municipal officials from all over the country. It was very productive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Other reports and correspondence from the councillors? I have mentioned several times over the past couple of years that our town's youth sports programs, as well as our school athletic programs, have embarked upon a program called Sports Done Right, which is sponsored by the University of Maine. This initiative was to establish a culture in town in which sportsmanship, opportunity, education, health, personal development, and fun can all become on an equal level with wins and championships. Following a rather rigorous and candid self-assessment process and a goal-setting process, I'm very pleased to report that the Sports Done Right visitation team, which came to town this past week, is recommending that Cape Elizabeth become certified as a Sports Done Right community. School board member Karen Burke deserves much of the credit. She was the leadership blue, if you will, that held this process together during a time of transition in administration in both the community services and our high school athletic department. So, we look forward to great things there. This is the first step, and I think already, whether coincidence or not, our high school boys varsity basketball team won the good sportsmanship for the first time in my memory this past year, which I think is really something. Any other reports, correspondence? Town managers report?
Yes, thank you, Jim. Just wanted to mention that one of the stories on our town website is a follow-through in the municipal budget process, and specifically, it relates to streetlights. And the chief of police has been working to implement the new streetlighting policy that was adopted, and there's a list of about 100 streetlights on the website that are due to be turned out. I encourage everyone to look at the list, and if they have any concerns, to let the chief of police know. But this is in keeping with trying to have more energy conservation, as well as savings of streetlighting costs, so I encourage everyone to look at that list, because my sense is when the lights are removed, we'll be hearing a few comments at that time, so better to hear them earlier rather than later, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Have a review of the minutes of the meeting held on, a special meeting on April 30th, 2009. Do I have a motion? Dave?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded for proof. Minutes, discussion on the motion? Errors, omissions? Seeing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. This evening, we will behold, the first item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the proposed zoning amendments for the BA zone in town. I'd first like to allow ordinance committee chair Sarah Lennon to provide some opening comments.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry to interrupt. Did we have the citizen opportunity for discussion of items?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but there might be somebody here.
I would now offer citizens the opportunity for discussion on items that are not on tonight's Seeing none, I will look forward to Councillor Lennon.
Just very briefly, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's great to see everyone here. I know all the councillors are eager to hear everybody's opinion on all sides of this issue, and indeed, many issues. I know there's been a lot of focus on the 553 property and the abutting 551, and I suspect that most people are here to speak about that, but there's many, many other things in the ordinance package as well. Some changes in wetlands, some issues about restaurants and when they should, hours that they can remain open, many design standards for upgrade in the BA zoning, and setbacks, property lines, allowed uses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's a thick packet we have before us, and it's my hope that, given the history of this particular ordinance, which has been through a lot of subcommittees for a lot of time, it was in the planning board, I believe, for over a year, and they had several public hearings, and they deliberated at length, and then they passed it on to us in the ordinance committee, and we held seven meetings, and again deliberated at length, and tweaked some of the things that the planning board had given us, and tried to come up with compromises on several of these more contentious issues. So, it's my profound hope that all sides can be respectful, and we can remain open-minded, and listen to one another, and with any luck, come up with a compromise that feels palatable for everyone. So with that...
Thank you, Sarah. I'd just like to run down through the rules. For those of you who may not have spoken at a public hearing before, we do have some rules that we'd like to enforce. We ask that you speak only to the topic of the hearing, which in this case is the proposed BA zone amendments. We ask that you use the lectern to my left at the front of the hall. We ask that you please give your name and address. We ask that you limit comments to three minutes. We ask that everyone respect the decorum of the meeting and the proceedings. No personal attacks will be tolerated. Those wishing to speak, we ask that they queue up two or three deep at the lectern so that we can move the process along fairly quickly. And finally, we ask that the audience refrain from overt displays of pleasure or displeasure, as these may be intimidating to those who may hold a differing view. So without further ado, I would declare this public hearing open. They come to the lectern if you wish to speak.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Beal. I live at 1 Crescent Road, Cape Elizabeth. I'm one road, one street removed in back of Irving Gas Station, for those of you who don't know where it is. I have to say, I was very pleased when I saw that 553 had been refurbished in the manner it had. It really added and enhanced that whole area, and I was very, very pleased to see that being done. But let me just let you know what I'm speaking about tonight, in terms of my support, in terms of that being coded for business. My understanding is, having done a little bit of research, there are no, currently there are no restrictions on residences that have, that can dictate to how many people can live in one residency. And that's under one lease. Now, there are no restrictions on how many cars can be in any one given property, how many can fit into a driveway, et cetera. There's no hours of operation in a private residency, and as you know, parties can go on and so on and so forth. A residential tenant can have a business there, say, a daycare, though it needed, it needs to be, go through code enforcement, but they can in fact run a business there. And it can even have a B&amp;B, if they so choose. They could rent out rooms, with certain code enforcement restrictions. And my understanding is that in terms of keeping this place looking as nice as it is, and what it does for the neighborhood, that long-term, I don't think it's going to be realistically an option for the owners to keep it if it's, does not bring in some money. So, I'm here to say I support the code, certainly the recoding of it, and I hope you would give that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Good evening. Joseph Foley, 511 Ocean House. I've written to you all, and I just would like to take a few minutes just to highlight a few things. Firstly, I'd like to thank the members of the ordinance committee, councillors Lennon, Becker, and Sherman, for their very deliberate and thoughtful review of proposed amendments. I attended all of their meetings, and I came away with the feeling that they were very sensitive to the concerns of all the residents of our town. I strongly believe that the respect and the integrity of the adjacent residential neighborhoods must be maintained. I am very much in favor of the wording that councillor Becker requested be included in the purpose statement in this regard. I am also in favor of the changes in the performance standards that pertain to the establishments within 100 feet of a residential district, that they shall not be open to customers between the hours of 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. No seating, service, or other organized gatherings shall be allowed outside after 6:00 PM, and no alcohol should be served outside at any time. Please be mindful that the adjacent residential neighbors will be living with the results of your votes for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening. My name is Chris Straw. I'm at 557 Shore Road, and I want to talk about the business district A, proposed amendments. I'd like to begin by saying, I think the design portions of the amendments are very well thought out, and I'm greatly in support of them, although I think the problem here is the devil is in the details. I'm going to start by just addressing some minor drafting errors that exist in the proposed amendments. Section D, subsection D, use a number of non-restrictive clauses where the intent was a restrictive clause, and you use which where that should have been used, so what you're doing is you're actually making some changes that aren't intended. Same with subsection F of section D, use a which, where that should be used, as it's written, "All structures existing as of April 1st, 2008 are non-conforming structures," so you should address that. Finally, subsection 3, as drafted, requires site plan review for all developments. Again, a which is used where that should have been used, and then an or is used shortly thereafter, and, I believe was intended, so I would ask you to address all of those before actually deciding one way or the other on this proposal. My substantive concerns are the fact that the purpose is that this is supposed to be pedestrian friendly area, but you're moving gas stations and repair facilities from conditional uses to primary uses. That's going to allow any of the properties on Shore Road to turn into gas stations, with very little input from the community, and very little oversight from the planning board. I don't think that is necessarily what was intended, but my reading of the statute would allow that. I don't think that gas stations or repair facilities should fall into that category and should be moved back into conditional uses, so that we still have some input onto this topic, especially given the fact that it's directly contradictory to the stated purpose of the area, which is pedestrian walking and serving the local community. Finally, metalworking is now going to be allowed on Shore Road. There's no definition of metalworking in the ordinance as near as I can tell. Because there's no definition, it leaves open to interpretation in the future. Technically, a metal shop could open up as long as it's under 300 square feet in size. I don't think anyone wants a metal shop there, but it is going to be allowed potentially under this ordinance change. That needs to be addressed. Metalworking needs to be defined. And finally, the setbacks are shrinking. The change from 25 to 5 feet between business parcels makes sense, but I think between the residential and the business, those decreasing them doesn't make as much sense, especially given the fact that the buffer zone has been removed. And I think that if you do reduce the setback, at least keep the buffer zone in between the residential properties and the business properties. And then, oh, and there's, the drafting error in subsection F would actually allow all existing structures to expand up to 5,000 square feet, potentially irrespective of whether it was actually intended. I don't see, I believe this is a drafting error. I don't understand what the purpose would be, so I'd ask that you look at that as well. Thank you.
Chris, could you please provide, at some point, could you please provide us with the wording changes that you proposed?
Yes.
Just so we could look at them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Cotrell, and I'm on 8 Wellback Way. When I first moved to Cape Elizabeth in 2004, I would often travel to the Cookie Jar, and on several occasions had noticed the house across the street at 553 Shore Road. It was an older home, obviously neglected and approaching complete disrepair. With thriving businesses surrounding the house, I have to say, it was, it was a bit of an eyesore as you enter Cape Elizabeth. With hope of someday making the house economically viable, Lee and her mother purchased it and with considerable expense began to restore it to its former glory. It now stands out as a beautiful house as you drive by, but unfortunately, the businesses surrounding the house are not what they were even a few years ago. Could you imagine how the area would look today with the Cookie Jar boarded up and 553 uninhabitable across the street? Not a great look for increasing property values in the neighborhood. What will happen to 553 Shore Road if we do not zone it as a business district, and once again, it goes up for sale? It is a very large house that needs considerable upkeep and could quickly revert back to a neglected house or remain vacant like the Cookie Jar. I also want to mention that I live in a neighborhood with a daycare center right next door. A few years ago, the Funny Farm applied to increase enrollment. I too was concerned what impact a big, a big daycare center would have on the neighborhood. Lots of cars, coming and going, the noise, et cetera. I can tell you my concerns were unfounded, and I do not even notice this activity. If the opposition truly thinks a few cars parked in the driveway are going to change the neighborhood, then I'm telling you, I'm telling you, your concerns are unfounded as well. I ask to, I ask for you to please consider Lee Wilson's request to zone 553 Shore Road as part of the business district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Julie Barnes, 84 Ocean House Road. My husband and I are the Leeses, proprietors of Rudy's of the Cape. I'd like to thank you to the council and community members who have taken the time to visit Rudy's recently in an attempt to better understand some of the amendments put forth tonight regarding the BA zone. My husband and I commend the ordinance committee for the thoughtful proposal before you tonight. It is clear that the spirit of the ordinance is to promote good citizenship and neighborly relations amongst Cape businesses and homeowners, something we are wholeheartedly in support of. That said, I would ask the council to reconsider two points among the amendments. The first being the option for a restaurant to serve until 10:00 PM, and the second being the elimination of the provision for no more than eight seats at a counter. I specifically request these. We've had two occasions to date where we normally are fine, closing the business at 9:00 PM. We've had two occasions where there was a ballgame on, and people specifically came in to have dinner and watch the game, and unfortunately, we had to tell them they had to leave in the middle of the game. An opening till 10:00 would allow us that flexibility just under those circumstances. We have no interest in remaining open beyond that. The eight-seat-at-a-counter provision is perplexing to us. I'm assuming the originality of that had to do with eight seats at a bar where alcohol is served, but those of you who have been in recognize the fact that there are eight seats at the counter where food is served, which I would say are a hotspot for families of young children who love the, the twirly stools. And so it's not unusual on a Friday night for one family to occupy the eight seats at the counter to enjoy their burger or sandwich that doesn't impact in any way the seven or eight seats that are actually at the bar. So I thank you for your consideration on those two points.
Thank you, Julie.
Hi. I'm Mary Page, and I own Rudy's of the Cape, 517 Ocean House Road, Cape Elizabeth. The wetland setback request started in 2003 as an ordinance change, and that in turn was rolled into the comprehensive plan in 2005, which was then thrown into the BA zone changes in 2007. The one stipulation regarding any of this was that the BA zone hooked to city sewer, which we did. We hooked a city sewer in 2007 at a, as a substantial cost of $10,000. And this change only affects Rudy's and Jordans. I know that there's someplace over by the Cookie Jar that it might affect. I'm not sure which one that is. We were told that the only way that our business could change was that we had a site plan review in place by Maureen and Bruce. For countless years, we were told this. In 2007, we hired Pat Carroll of Carroll &amp; Associates. We had our site plan review, and it is, again, a substantial cost of $15,000. He worked with Maureen, and what he wanted, and what was to be done, and how it was to be done, it was dictated. With the expanded hours, the outdoor seating, the expansion plans, everything in place. When we submitted it to the planning board in 2007, it was rejected because the BA wetland zone ordinance was not changed yet. That wasn't in place. So in February of 2008, I came before the town council, which was, it was given to you for you to fast-track it. And Michael, you also helped me with that, to say, we need to have this taken care of. It does reflect on the two businesses in town. It was a year and a half ago. We submitted the changes. We wanted it to be in place for the summer of 2008. Now we're coming into 2009. We met the stipulations. We met the criteria. We, the BA wetland setback needs to be implemented. And as for the BA zone changes, from the February 27th, 2009 forecaster, and I quote, "Special rules have been placed on some uses on lots within 10,000, within 100 feet of residential property and on lots smaller than 10,000 square feet. Only three properties in the BA zone are smaller than 10,000 square feet: Kettle Cove Dairy, the fire station on Shore Road, and 553 Shore Road. No buildings in the Shore Road zone could be farther than 100 feet from a residential property." Some committee members said that the lot size restrictions invoke spot zoning, a method on the rezoning one property at a time, which is not legal in town, but agreed that it was the most convenient way to restrict something like a loud late-night restaurant from being opened at 553 Shore Road. Under the zoning changes approved by the committee, restaurants on smaller lots of 10,000 square feet must close by 5:00, and so on. These changes would allow businesses as usual to continue at the good table on Route 77 and prevent Rudy's from serving alcohol outside under these restrictions. These restrictions were not even issued when we had been dictated what our site plan review was and when it was submitted. This is spot zoning, and apparently, it's not legal. And they really need to be, oh, excuse me, they need to be rewritten, and maybe with the help of the business owners, we could accomplish that. Because again, this only restricts Rudy's and Jordans. Thank you.
Mary.
Excuse me. Could you increase the volume? There's a difficult air vent here.
I can't. Maybe they can from the control room.
Karen? Yes. It also underneath that, that, could you turn up the volume in the hall a little bit?
Yeah.
Also, there's seats in the front, under that overhang, it tends to absorb the noise, and you can't hear anything. Those of you underneath that overhang, uh, you get much. Thanks, Karen.
Hi. My name's Elizabeth Monahan. I'm a small business owner, and also an owner of one of the properties very close to 553 Shore Road. I'm here for three points. I want to express the highest and best use thought process, the impact of 553 that would have on the neighborhood, and also to be a small business owner encouraging small business owners to be able to do business here in Cape Elizabeth. First of all, the highest and best use. I was a member of the zoning board for a number of years here, and I know how important that is when you look at properties and having the highest and best use. When you look at the location of this particular property, it is surrounded by business influences. And if you take the beauty of that home and you put it into a residential, back-to-the-residential type of idea, it really isn't appropriately to be used as a residential at this, at this point in time, because you've got the Cookie Jar across the street, hopefully that will open up soon. You've got a place for people to fix cars, and you've got, of course, you've got the public safety right there, social and mental health building next door, an apartment building, and the building that I own, 5, 537 Shore Road, the Cape Shore Day Spa. I just think if we are just simplistic in thinking about what type of impact this particular property and the use that they want to have on, with 553, it's, it's a no-brainer. It's, it's the highest and best use of that property is to have a small business and possibly an antique shop in there. Second of all, the impact, and oftentimes with impact, people think cars and people and interruption of neighbor, neighborhoods. And I can tell you right now, my property, 537 Shore Road, would be very, very similar to the type of property that they are suggesting that they would like to have. Cape Shore Day Spa is a hair salon and spa, and their hours of business is about 10:00 to 7:00, six days a week. I think this is similar to what they're looking for. On average, you see in the parking lot, and we do have parking there, you see maybe five cars in that parking lot, and maybe one additional one in the carport for the owner. That's not huge. So the coming and going of traffic for this type of a service industry is, is small. It's not going to cause car accidents, or, you know, people to get all confused of coming and goings of cars and all. And also, outside of the business time, is our residential people. Of course, you know, they get, they take off in the morning, and they come back in the evening very, very well. And if I think about the neighbors that we have, it would be almost a mirror image of what, of what they have, because right behind my building are, is that same neighborhood. And we don't have any, we don't have a fence or anything like that. We have trees. And we see the neighbors coming back and forth through our parking lot to get to wherever they want to go with no problem. There isn't a sound problem. We have never, since 1996, since we've owned it, we've never had our neighbors.
Was I asked you to wind up, please?
Yes. Lastly, I just think that we need to encourage businesses in Cape Elizabeth. I think too many times we shut down opportunities, and we have a great community here, and I think this property and the use that they're suggesting would be just in addition to the area.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. [inaudible].
Good evening. I'm Peggy McGeehee with Perkins Thompson, and I've been asked by Mr. Sanford and Ms. Wilson Sanford, and also by Ms. Wayne Nicholas, to speak to some of the legal issues and some of the factual issues in the two issues, although I want to confine my comments to the one that's before you right now, given that there's been a lot of confusion. I know that they've been working hard to be collaborative and appreciate the time that the councillors have provided and the care, but this just seems to be a piece that they wanted to address. In looking at the, the changes in the zone, what you have right now is a little tiny zone, and it's surrounded by homes, and it is a neighborhood zone right now. What your standards that you're, the changes you're considering are going to reduce the protections they have. Just as a prior speaker said, now there will be an opportunity for, as a permitted use, repair garages, gas stations with four bays, an 80-seat restaurant, daycare centers, there are things that, that were, were not permitted uses that would be made permitted, permitted uses. But beyond that, buffers, the buffer is eliminated. The setback of 50 feet is now 20 feet, of 25 feet is now 5 feet. Parking is allowed. The impacts are extraordinary. I think, believe you have information in your packet about other restaurants in Cape Elizabeth have the proportion of their alcohol sales be about 15% or 17%. This one allows 25% of the sales to This one allows 25% of the sales to be alcohol, and it also allows outdoor uses. So these impacts in this very small neighborhood, with all these residents around here, are going to be extreme. They will undermine the neighborhood quality. And why is that important from a legal perspective? That's because you have provisions in your comprehensive plan with which your ordinance should be consistent. And I'm going to just read a couple of those provisions for you. The plan calls for the North Shore Residential District to be preserved. And it says that this area, quote, "includes most of the oldest neighborhoods in Cape Elizabeth," and quote, "The lots are tightly clustered and reflect densities common during the early 1900s, and it's zoned for the densest residential development." Now, of course, commercial being right next door is going to be much more intense impact. So the plan actually calls for more instead of less protections. It says that the town shall add land use regulation options that preserve community character and preserve the compact neighborhoods along Shore Road. As we mentioned, what's being proposed to you is the opposite. The comprehensive plan does go into no significant expansion of the business area. We can talk about that when you bring that issue forward. But the bottom line is, the integrity and the preservation of this neighborhood is paramount in the comprehensive plan. Your zone is fine. It's not pressing its boundaries with use. The cookie jar needs to be sold. I mean, so it's not a need that is compelling so that would justify these kinds of extreme exposure and vulnerability for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
My name is Laura Lynch. I live at 880 Shore Road, which is right down the road from 553 Shore Road. And I just wanted to say that I am in support of the zoning change. I think it would be good additions since there's other businesses in the neighborhood. And I think it's also important for Cape Elizabeth to support as a community, local businesses. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Hi, my name is Anne Bosworth, and I live at Old Port Road, about a mile down the street. I've also lived on Cottage Farms Road, which is right around the corner from 553 Shore Road. And I just, my husband and I wanted to show our support for the rezone. We're hoping that you'll be flexible with it, and we, you know, are excited that that business zone could potentially sort of be what it is now, a thriving business where the, you see people walking around there and the kids riding their bikes to and from the local businesses. And it's nice to see. It's a nice entryway coming into Cape Elizabeth, and we are fully in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
I'm Nancy Whiting Sears, 17 Lenwood Street, and I'm going to speak on two issues. The first one is the B&amp;B on Shore Road. I know many lovely towns that have B&amp;Bs right in the middle of their neighborhoods. Camden comes to mind as one. I think it would be very nice to have a B&amp;B in Cape Elizabeth, and I do support that idea. I would only question that you take a look at the parking situation. I know that house very well, and I would be a little concerned about the parking there. The other issue that I want to mention is Rudy's Restaurant. I very much love Rudy's. I go there very often, and I want to support whatever they're asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening. My name is Gail Schmader. I live at 511 Ocean House Road. I want to extend thanks to the members of the ordinance committee for doing such a comprehensive review and draft of the BA amendments, proposed amendments. I attended most of those meetings. Their work was deliberate and thoughtful as they balanced the concerns of businesses in abutting residential neighborhoods. They worked hard to reach a fair compromise for both districts. I support their work. Thank you. I especially support two of their proposals. First, the addition of the words, "The BA zone protects the integrity of the adjacent residential neighborhood." It's important to me to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. We are a multi-generational, family-oriented neighborhood. Most of us work five to six days a week, go to bed early, and spend our free time enjoying our family and friends and taking care of our properties. Second, I support the establishment of a 100-foot buffer zone with restrictions if the business property and/or parking lot is located next to a residential district. I feel strongly this helps to maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods. Closing between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 c.m. makes certain the noise from patrons and cars leaving an establishment is curtailed at a reasonable hour for the abutting neighborhood. Also, if an establishment holds a liquor license, allowing no alcohol to be served outside and limiting the hours of outside service of food to 6:00 p.m. is respectful of neighbors' windows and doors that may be open and of the time that neighbors may be outside relaxing with their families. It's very important to me that our neighbors, especially our children, not witness alcohol consumption outside. Please, continue the work of upholding the integrity of our residential neighborhoods in the abutting BA zone. And thank you very much for your service and commitment to Cape Elizabeth.
Thank you, Gail.
Good evening. My name is Vern Orr, and Jack and I have lived at 505 Ocean House Road since 1957. You'll have to bear with me because I have an allergy and I find it difficult to talk. But I do want to ditto everything Gail has just said. Thank you.
Vern.
My name is Stephen Pop. I reside on Woodland Road in Cape Elizabeth. I'd like to address several topics this evening, one being Rudy's. I'm in support of Rudy's Food. Man of my girth will tell you, it's a very good place. The people seem really, really nice there. However, I don't live close enough that I feel, and I'm none about it, to speak appropriately on any changes that they need. I would like to address, however, and oppose, the changes to the zoning of 553 Shore Road. This is not about fulfilling a dream of opening a pottery shop or a quilt shop or, you know, lifelong business dream. Basically, that would be handled under our home occupation or our home business clause. That's easy, couple hundred dollars, two-by-two-foot sign, nobody can stop that, not even the highest court in the land. Highest and best use isn't an issue because the property was purchased at a low, low price. It was purchased at a very, very low price, and the parties that did purchase it were well-aware and familiar with the town, and they purchased it, basically, they know that they purchased it as a residence and not as a commercial property. We've had enough bailouts in this country for people, you know, when it comes to, "Oh, jeez, now I can't make it." But basically, I did pay a visit to Augusta, and I found Augusta very, very nice. Governor kept inviting me up after I hosted him several times at the Maine Military Museum with Lee Humiston. So I was instructed to do this by some friends up there. To whom it may concern, as instructed, this letter is to serve as a legal notice and this statement to serve as a legal notice to any and all elected or appointed town officials of the town of Cape Elizabeth, Maine. I, along with other citizens of Cape Elizabeth, have great concerns regarding the already dangerous traffic situation on Shore Road, on the Shore Road area between Woodland and Charles Roads. This is a major question, there is a major question as to the zoning status of 551 Shore Road. Recent public statements by the town manager and zoning officials leave the legal clarification and active status of 551 Shore Road unclear. This questionable mapping error, along with the longstanding efforts of the owners of 553 Shore Road to change zoning from residential to commercial status, could create even more commercial business than discussed at previously-held public meetings. That's critical. Percentage-wise, this could be, no doubt, the largest increase of commercial business and traffic in Cape Elizabeth's history, if you check it percentage-wise. A major traffic study should have been done long before 553 Shore Road made application to even rezone. It just should have been done, period. Local residents who are very familiar with this strip of road find it awful harrowing to navigate. This sidewalk-free area proposes a history, possesses a history of accidents, near accidents, speeding, and other safety issues. The issues, status, and wishes of the owners of 551 and 553 Shore Road no longer have any bearing with regard to the actions you must take. Safety is the paramount issue. A rush to vote or a change of any kind cannot take place until there is a new, full, professional, comprehensive traffic study and public hearing. The job of a town official is to protect the safety of, in well-being of all of its citizens, not the financial interests of a few. In closing, after being notified of public safety concerns, you must take immediate action to protect all parties involved. Please let me remind you that in the future, if a major accident occurs causing injury or fatality, the town and you personally may not be protected from litigation or personal loss. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Johnson, and I live at 12 Arrow Point Road in the Oakhurst section, not too far away from 551. I would like to speak in favor of Lee Wilson's request to turn her property on Shore Road into a retail shop. As many of you know, for nine years, I owned Presence of Heart right down the street, another yellow house just a few hundred yards down, just across the line in South Portland. And I know many of the neighbors here who were customers of mine, and we enjoyed a wonderful time as retailers in that area. Even though it's been three years since I closed my shop, I still, every day, have people say, "I miss your shop. You're a valued asset and something that we really needed and valued in our community." Before I opened my shop, I often thought, "What a perfect building the beautiful yellow house across the street from the cookie jar would make as a retail space." Had it been for sale at the time, I would have pursued the same path that Lee is pursuing now. It's kind of ironic, but I always looked at that space and I said, "Oh, my God, that would be such a gorgeous shop." I want to assure those who have concerns that gift shops make wonderful neighbors. You can ask all the people who abutted my space at 463 Cottage Road. The hours are basically 10 to 5. The customers are friends and neighbors who enjoy pretty things and will appreciate the attention to detail that Lee will bring to the gardens, her merchandise, and the building itself. Shops like mine and the kind of shop that Lee wants to open are the backbones of what makes small towns special. They're a great place to greet friends, to discuss last week's school board meeting, and a great place to find a unique gift. Small businesses are closing everywhere in this country, and to me, someone who has the vision and the fortitude and wants to actually do this, I take my hats off, hat off to Lee. The space on Shore Road offers a perfect little retail oasis for those of us who live on this side of Cape Elizabeth. While we still hold out hope that the cookie jar will reopen as the cornerstone of this retail area, Lee's shop will be a wonderful addition to this quaint stretch of Shore Road. In this time when so many small businesses are struggling, I applaud Lee and her vision to turn this beautiful building into a shop that we can all enjoy. Lee's excellent sense of style and beauty will be a huge asset to the area. Please give us all the opportunity to enjoy her shop. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
My name is David Sanford. I live at 1 Charles Road. I have two points that I'd like to make. The first is this. There are clear differences between what is permissible in a business district and what is permissible in a residential district. In a business district, you don't stand outside and complain to a restaurant that you don't like the odors that are being vented out through the kitchen. In a business district, you don't complain to a retail shop that there's too many cars coming and going, too many people there. In a carpentry shop or a furniture shop, you don't get to stand outside and complain that you don't like the noise of the power saws. In all those instances, that kind of behavior is what is expected in a commercial district. And the three, and as you probably know, the three examples that I use are directly drawn from what is being, from the package that's being submitted as allowable uses for this district. Okay, fine. Then we come to 553 Shore Road. It is now a residential property, and it is, Lee Wilson requests that it be changed to a business property. The difficulty to me is relatively simple. That huge structure is embedded in a residential area. I sent all of you yesterday, four photographs that I took the same day, that show that there is incredibly little space between 553 Shore Road and Jane Wayne Nicholas's property at 551 Shore Road on one side, and our property at 1 Charles Road on the other side. There is not even 15 feet between the property boundary at our lilac bushes and the back of 553 Shore Road. You couldn't even get a dumpster into that property if you wanted to use it as a restaurant. The cost to the residents of the area is simply too great to allow it. It just is. It's not personal, about businesses. It's not about Lee Wilson. It's about this being an utterly inappropriate structure, inappropriate property to be used as a business. The cost to us, all the abutters are opposed to it. The abutter on the north is opposed to it. The abutter on the south is opposed to it. The Freemans, who aren't direct abutters but live very close to that property, a few freed from our house are also opposed to it. The neighborhood is opposed to it. We have collected 46 of 48 signatures from people from the neighborhood who are opposed to that rezoning. That's my first issue. The other one can be very quick. The fact is that once that property is rezoned business, it is a business-zoned property. If, for whatever reason, Lee Wilson chooses to sell it, then the fact that she wants to run it as a small retail shop is completely irrelevant. It is a business property, which can become an auto repair shop, it can be a veterinary shop, it can be all sorts of permissible uses. And those of us who live near that are expected to endure, in addition to the difficulties that come from it being a business property, we have to endure the fact that it could be resold.
I have to ask you to please wrap it up, David, please.
Wrapping it up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Dadderson, and I live at 2 Charles Road, directly across the street from David, within view of 553 Shore Road, as they are also, I'm in their view also. David's right. Penny Jordan and I walked the property the other day, and I said, "Lee wants to rent the third floor as an apartment," although she says nobody would live in that place. She's still going to rent the third floor as an apartment. I think that might have to have a fire escape. I'm not sure about that. But if it did need a fire escape, there's absolutely no place for it to go. The back of the house is so close to David's property, and there's sort of a little, I think it's a bulkhead into the cellar. There would be no, I'm not actually sure if a fire escape would be required. I saw that they were for any people that lived on third floors, and I do see them around, but I'm not actually sure. I did call the fire chief, but he hasn't returned my call. In the zoning ordinances, it says, "The planning board must find that the proposal will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and have no adverse effect on the value of adjacent properties." This would definitely have an effect on the value of our properties. How could it not have? The people that are speaking in favor of this, none of them live in the neighborhood. None of them are within sight of this building. I would like this building, too. I did used to visit Cassie's shop a lot. I liked it very much. I used to go to her home when she had the sales in her home. I would go to Lee's house if it were someplace else. I don't want it in my neighborhood, and none of us want it in our neighborhood. Nobody would want this in their neighborhood, none of you, and none of the speakers here tonight would want it if it were in their neighborhood. And I think that it's too bad, actually, that we have to really come back and fight this, continue this law. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Carl Best. I live at 12 Pondview Road, Cape Elizabeth. My property abuts the BA zone on Ocean House Road. I've expressed my thoughts and gratitudes for your efforts on this topic in an email, and thank you for responding. But I did just want to highlight a couple of things and emphasize my full support for the language contained in the sections involving the purpose, the performance standards, and particularly the design requirements that you've put forth. I would just say that, speaking for myself, unfortunately, I feel that our neighborhood has already been compromised to quite an extent, and I for one would not be in favor of compromising any of these amendments that have been put forth today, particularly those that relate to the 100-foot buffer to the critical wetlands areas, extended hours for businesses in residential areas, as well as outdoor seating. I would ask, and I know it's a difficult thing to strike a balance between residential privacy and the ability for us as residents to have these businesses close at hand and take advantage of that, but, you know, I would just ask that you be mindful that these are residential areas first and foremost, and I hope that they remain. Thanks.
Thank you, Carl. If everybody could speak just a little bit louder. Sometimes the low voices are difficult to hear.
Eric Hanson. I live at 7 Cragmore, which is right around the corner from the Shore Road property, 553. Rather than repeat what everyone else has said, supporting Lee's asking for an extension of BA zone, I will add, I ran by the property today and looked at the similar property. I develop a fair amount of real estate, and today, the restrictions, and Cape is sort of on a dead-end line. It really doesn't offer much for development, most of it, small, local businesses. In the area where Lee's property is, the property may look big. I think the porch sort of gives it that appearance, but I think it has about 1,800 square feet. Between the actual square footage of the property and the amount of parking there, in reality, that property doesn't lend itself toward, you know, it's not going to be a Walmart or anything like that. It's, it really, there's an economic piece that, as a developer, I think people forget whether it makes economic sense to do something. And from that perspective, I think it has a limiting factor in its ability to contain a large amount of people. I just don't think it's set up for that. But I support the zoning changes that you guys have worked hard on and the committee's worked hard on, and I hope that you extend the zoning to the 553.
Thank you, Eric.
I'm Wynne Pillsbury. In light of full disclosure, Lee Wilson is my daughter. I live at 1278 Sawyer Road, and I'm here this evening because, as a real estate appraiser, which I've been now for over 40 years, about 10 years ago, I had the occasion to appraise this property. In reviewing that appraisal, I realized at that time, 10 years ago, all the uses were the same: Irving Station, Cookie Jar, Fire Station, and everything right through there. Essentially, from Charles Road to Woodland Road, with the exception of the house at either end, one being 553 Shore Road, it's a business district. Not big business, not Walmart, as the gentleman just said, but it should be in a BA zone. It just makes sense. Any appraiser that's going to go in there now and look at that property has to go through a highest and best use analysis in their own mind, and the highest and best use is not residential, given the economic factors of the other surrounding uses. Nobody can come in and say, "This is the best, highest of best uses is residential." It used to be. I went to college, fired school. I know the property. I know who lived there. But those days are gone. This should be included in the BA zone. I'm in favor of that change.
Thank you, Wyn.
My name is Jennifer Bornick. I live at 26 Old Fort Road, and I'm here in support of changing the zoning to allow for a business at 553. I love to shop in Cape. Whenever I can, I try to use the local businesses that are already here. I think that the home that she's going to be using is perfect for a small business, a small retail shop. When I shop in and around Cape Elizabeth at the small businesses, I hardly ever come across more than one or two cars that are in the parking lots, and I don't think this would be any different than that. I don't see being a place where there'd be a lot more traffic. I also think that, you know, some people said you wouldn't want it in your neighborhood, but I do think this area, it suits this area. You know, maybe it wouldn't in another area, but I actually think that, knowing Lee, that she'll, she would do a great job, and it would be a beautiful place, and she would, I know, upkeep the character of the house. So I'm here in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
My name is Harry Hardy. I live at 6 Giles Road. I've lived there for 37 years. And if I don't talk loud enough, be sure and tell me, and I'll speak up. But I'm not very happy with the way it's going, and I think it's important that the council understand, rightly or wrongly, you have an entire neighborhood in Charles and Warren, people who really feel that they're not being listened to. They feel like maybe they're getting bullied a little bit. And I have a few illustrations. Our neighborhood, a lot of people don't know it's in Cape Elizabeth. A lot of people who live in Cape Elizabeth think our neighborhood is in South Portland. And I'll give you an example. I've lived there for 37 years. I have never had anyone from Cape Elizabeth running for public office who's knocked on my door. I have, however, on a number of occasions, had candidates from South Portland who have knocked on my door. And I listen politely, because I'm a polite person, and I listen to them, and then I tell them, "Well, I'm sorry that I can't help you. I don't, you know, I don't live in South Portland. This is Cape Elizabeth. The South Portland line is up at the end of Warren Avenue." I told one young man that, and he apologized for interrupting me, didn't a bow face, walked down the steps, and went to the house next door to tell him the same thing. And I have a couple of other examples of why I think the neighborhood sometimes is not really taken seriously. And I don't want to voice them publicly here. If any councilor would like to hear them, I'll tell you. They involve people, they involve no one who works for the town now or is an elected official, but it's happened in the past. I've looked at all these letters on the town website in favor of and opposed to, and there's lots of them, and I don't think there's anybody in favor of this who's actually within sight of that building. There's certainly nobody on Charles Road in favor of it, and I don't think there's anybody on Warren. There's nobody that I've talked to that's in favor. And one person came up and said that this building was surrounded by business. I suggest that person go and look again. That building is surrounded to the south by a residence, to the west by a residence, and to the east by a residence. The only abutting business is one that's across the street. There was a letter, on the 25th of January, there was a letter that said, it was a letter to the town council about that rezoning. And in paragraph two of this letter, it said, "People who disagree with the comprehensive plan or the planning board are being disrespectful." Well, that's not disrespect. That's democracy. And in paragraph three, it suggested that anyone who disagrees is always free to move. They don't like what's happening. And paragraph five of that letter suggested it's no longer viable as a residence. Well, it's been a residence for 100 years. It was a residence when it was purchased the last time, and why are we even discussing? I'll try to wrap up very quickly.
Please.
I've been here 37 years. I haven't bothered you much, so I'm going to take a minute. All right?
We have rules to abide by.
You can shut the mic off, but they're going to hear me.
Eric.
All right.
Eric, we have rules to abide by.
All right. And a dumpster. If you're going to put a dumpster there, my neighbors, my neighbors, the Sanford's, if there's a dumpster in that backyard, instead of having dinner by soft music and candlelight, it's going to be headlights and horns. I just, you know, I can't believe what people are considering. I'm afraid of losing the name.
I just want to briefly comment. Jim, let me do this. It's always good to see Mr. Hardy come back to public hearings. He came to one about 25 years ago, and as he was exiting the back door, there was a skunk there. He opened the door, the skunk sprayed all over here, all over the door, so it's always good that you have the courage to return.
Glenn Rudberg, 13 High Bluff Road. I'm not a skunk. I'm here to support 553 and what's in front of you. I feel like, as we look at this, and you look at this map, and we hear that people are saying that it's not surrounded by business, and it's not surrounded by commercial. The reality is, it really is.
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
Yes. And as you look at this, it is surrounded by business, and it's surrounded by commercial. And I find it interesting that it stops right at this property, and I wonder why. And if I were the town council, I'd be saying to myself, "Well, I'd be a little concerned about creep, and what happens if we do this? Then what?" And to me, Charles Street seems like the logical break. It seems like a mistake that this is zoned the way it is right now. And I also, I want to thank Lee for what she did to the property, because as we all know, it was not in the condition that it is now. The people that owned it before did not have the vision that they have. And I asked the town council to think about what if we didn't have someone that took the care and to protect the integrity of that property. And the interesting thing is, is that when I was in college, I lived in a house just like that house. It was the exact house. Same floor plan, same everything. And when Lee bought the property, I asked her permission to tour the property. That property was a fraternity house, and it's ruined now. I'm not suggesting that that's what's going to happen here. What I'm suggesting is that you have sort of, we sort of have a choice. Do we have a small business with some vision that will protect the integrity of the town? Or do we potentially leave this open to our apartment house with very few rules? Or do we leave it to potentially someone who wants to purchase at $0.00 again? And maybe that person is interested in living across from the gas station, the fire department, the other businesses? And we ask ourselves, what happens then? So I commend what's happened at this point. I appreciate the neighbors' concerns, but I think it's the right thing for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Wyn.
Ann Clark, 618 Shore Road, very close to 553, and very much in support of this project. You know, people talk about this being a residential area, and I can certainly appreciate that. However, this is, this is already commercially zoned. You have a fire station. You have a gas station. You have commercial buildings. You have Ann Veronica. This is what I consider, and I think is commercially zoned already. This is an area that a gentleman was talking about safety. There are sidewalks that go to Fort Williams and stop, and then there are sidewalks that go to South Portland. This is an area, actually, that is very safe for the children to walk. My daughter goes to Ann Veronica. She used to go to the Presence of Hearts, which is now closed. It is a very safe area. It has sidewalks all the way up and down. It's a place for the young kids to walk. I heard the safety issue, and I thought that is completely the opposite of what I thought, because to ride your bike or to walk again at Fort Williams, then, on the way up 618, up Shore Road, they stop. So that issue, I find actually just completely the opposite. Again, I very much support this. I very much support small businesses coming into Cape Elizabeth. I can't imagine not supporting this. And again, as Glenn Rudberg stated, the integrity of the house, it is so much, it's cleaner, it's beautiful, as it is, and I am completely confident that this will stay that way, and it will be completely under control. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Ingles. I live in Shore Acres on Wambek Road. I own the building beside Rudy's. And I know this is pretty much a referendum on 553 and Rudy's, but there are other considerations in the BA zone that are very important to our building. We took the risk and built the building a few years ago, myself and Joel Fitzpatrick. And one of the components that was crucial to us at the time was the density. The comprehensive plan called for more activity in areas that had been developed. So we developed the building, and obviously, the economy's been very, very difficult for us. There've been very few commercial people interested in the site. But it also, one of the components in the zone you're considering is reducing the density to 7,500 feet in that zone over an acre, which that has. So I strongly urge you to pass that. From our perspective, I know, as I say, 553, I have no opinion on those two buildings. Plenty of people do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy.
My name is Emily Bugby, and I live at 31 Cottage Trunks Road. And I am appreciative of all the work that's done here. I'm very unfamiliar with these processes as a rule. However, I am familiar with safety. I'm familiar with the neighborhood, living on a street nearby, and I am a runner, and I can say that running down this section where there are not sidewalks in front of this house, I feel unsafe, because across the street, there aren't any sidewalks, because there's a fire department, and there's the Cookie Jar that did not have a sidewalk, and the gas station has an island of a sidewalk in front of it. The sidewalk doesn't actually start until the church, which is in South Portland. The traffic changes as soon as it gets to Cape Elizabeth because of the fact that the width of the road changes, because there are no sidewalks on either side of the street to create some margins or borders. I'm not in favor of changing the zoning of 553 if I don't understand what the principal purpose is for this zoning change. I understand that somebody has made this property much more beautiful. I really appreciate that, because I watched it for a while, tried to figure out who painted that house, so I wouldn't hire the same painter. And I wanted to see it improved, but I'm not sure that changing the zoning is in line with just the improvements of the actual property itself. I'm hoping that when we look at the overall plan for the town, we can think about the kind of neighborhoods that we want to create. And if we create a neighborhood like this one, do we want to replicate that somewhere else in the town, and for what purpose would that neighborhood serve? I think that pedestrian access to business is a very important item. I'm fully in support of that. I just am not convinced that one piece of property in this particular neighborhood is going to address the kind of zoning changes that we might want to look at in the town as a whole, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Emily.
Mr. Chairman, I know I spoke before, but I have a question. It seemed as if this hearing is covering two different issues, and I had one important point, because it seems like it's talking not only about the change in standards, but also the expansion. And in that case, I would ask Lee to make my other point that I had withheld. It's one point.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think we should wait till we've heard from everybody who wants to speak.
And that's fine. If I could just, before the hearing closes, make that point. Thank you.
I'm Joyce Wilson Sanford. I live at 1 Charles Road, Cape Elizabeth. My cheeks are rosy because my feelings are high, and therefore, here's what I want to say. Thank you, council members. Thank you, ordinance committee members, for being disciplined and thorough in your work on a topic that has such high feelings. I don't know if you've noticed, but Lee and I never go to a meeting without saying hello to each other and shaking hands. to each other and shaking hands. And we are in total opposition about what we want. And so I'm standing here in support of civility. Thank you. I'm starting to get hurt feelings about our property. Has anybody noticed how beautiful it is, and how often we paint it, and the landscaping, and the gardens? If there are brownie points for the five fifty-three, I want some brownie points for Charles Road. So that's null and void. You have an issue that is fraught with dilemmas, meaning they seem irreconcilable. If you come down Shore Road and look at this area, you see one thing. If you go stand in the middle of Charles Road, where the cars used to circle around, you get a whole different feel of a neighborhood. This is a really very strategic decision that you need to make. So I, the legal groundwork has to be good, the comprehensive plan has to be looked at in terms of how is it being translated into action, and then we need to talk about the people impact, and at that point, it's time for a more collaborative conversation. That's how I would go about it, because you really have a bowl of spaghetti on your plates. And lastly, I'm just sorry that that property was bought as a residence when it was wanting to be used as a business.
Thank you, Joyce.
Hi, I'm Skip Murray, twenty Grill Road. I'm here as the owner of L.B. Murray &amp; Sons, probably one of the most offensive businesses in Cape Elizabeth, to some people. But I try hard, and I guess that's my point, is I think a business can coexist in a residential neighborhood, which I do. But I have total faith in before the planning board and the town council on a few business adventures before, that if the conditions and approvals are met, in other words, the businesses do and say what they mean, and the council puts the stipulations on that the residents are happy with, that if they work together, you can coexist. If an excavation company can coexist in the center of town with residential neighbors around me, and my pit on Fowler Road with trucks in and out every twenty minutes during the day, and I do hear complaints, but you have to work both sides. And on that other point, when the two work together, I'm very proud to do the work in Cape Elizabeth for citizens of the Cape and the other business of the Cape. So I think I'm here pro-business to try and create more business in Cape Elizabeth. I was also on the comprehensive plan committee for that one reason. I put my time in the comprehensive plan committee to promote more business in Cape. And, you know, to the betterment of these neighbors, there is no good place for business in Cape Elizabeth till it's given a chance. And I think after the process is over, and the decisions are made, if it is in favor of the businesses for both Rudy's and five fifty-three, given the chance, I think that it can work out. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Freeman, and I live at three Charles Road. And we are right here, we're next to the Sanford's. We don't abut the property that we are talking about, but we can see the backyard. We have lived there not quite as long as the Harries have, but when we bought the property, yes, the cookie jar was there, Kelly's Fish Market was there, all of the businesses were there. That was wonderful. That's why we bought there, because we also thought we had Cottage Farms School for our children to be able to go to. That changed, as you well know. The person bought the house, as Joyce said, as a residence, knowing it was a residence. There is no reason to change it for a business at all. And I would like to look at each and every one of you and ask you, if you lived on Charles Road, where either the Wilson Sanford's live or where we live, and you had bought your house thirty years ago, could you sit here and graciously say, yes, we will change it to a business, because this woman bought the house, we understand economic times, we understand everything about it? Would you want it in your backyard? I don't care how quiet, whatever she's gonna have. I used to go to the gift shop up the street also. I also remember when there were Christmas sales, when the streets would be lined on Cottage Road for the sales. I don't want that, and we want our neighborhood to stay the same. And I really want you to put yourself in our shoes and in our house, and see if you would like it in your backyard, because all these people that have stood up here to say tonight that they live such and such place, and they support small businesses, and they can't understand why the neighbors... You want it in your backyard? I bet you wouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
I'm David Freeman. And there's not too much more I can say, except for two things. Number one is, I wanted to point out, and everybody else that is opposed to five fifty-three is pointing out, is that the people who support it live away. And the other thing is, is that the water has already been tested, and I don't know if you're aware of it, but it's been rented out periodically since she's owned it. And people have lived in it for periods of time, whether it be a week, or she could better tell you how long. But we can attest, the Sanford's and ourselves, that some of the people who have rented it have not been very good neighbors, if you will. They've sat out on the porch. Now, here's what the problem is. The problem is the proximity of this building. The people that sat out on the porch were just sitting here having dinner, and of course, I'm sure they had some wine. And as the evening went along, the voices got louder. So eleven o'clock, it was loud, eleven-thirty, it was louder, twelve o'clock, it was louder. Now, if I'd known that this can of worms was gonna come up, I probably would've called up the police to bond and complain. But being a good neighbor, I kind of sucked it up. But we've already had the experience of people being in this building in a proximity to our houses, and in the summertime, at nine o'clock at night, noise travels. There's very little traffic through there. And so I'm definitely opposed to this being rezoned from residential to business because of the proximity to our neighborhood and the impact, the negative impact it's gonna have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
I'm Maureen Kelly, and I live at forty-four Warren Avenue. And my property is right next to the Freemans', and it abuts the Sanford's. And this property, too, is in my backyard, and I've lived there fifteen years, and it's a very densely populated neighborhood, as we all know. And I chose to live there, because I love to sit on my front porch in the summer and enjoy my neighbors, and enjoy the kids that come through, and the ones that used to walk through my yard to go to the cookie jar. But I'm not going to enjoy the situation with five fifty-three being changed to a business. And what David and Joyce just said, I have to ditto everything, because I heard the same noises escalating, and the people were having a fun time, and I didn't want to be a bad neighbor, so I didn't complain either. We just sucked it up, as he said. And, but I just want it on the record that I'm very much in opposition to this move for the value of our properties in the neighborhood, and that's not why we bought there. And if I wanted to be behind a business, I would've purchased behind a business. Thank you for listening, and thank you all for doing a great job.
Thank you, Maureen.
How you doing? I'm John Valle. I live at thirty-one McCully Road. I am in support of the Shore Road. I do support small businesses, and I think it's good for the town of Cape Elizabeth. And I also am up here supporting Rudy's of the Cape. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
My name's Carl Pearson. I live at twenty-seven Fowler Road. I'm in the butter of Skip Murray's Sanford. And he's not a bad neighbor. It does raise dust, and it causes debris, and, you know, this is all the dynamic once again in the town. I'm not gonna speak in favor or against Shore Road. I've had correspondence with some of the neighbors relative to highest and best use, and Win Pillsbury mentioned that before, and these things are all gonna have to work out. And your council, gosh, I don't want to be in your position, because it is tough, especially with that property. One thing that's been a recurrent theme, the neighbors have talked about parties that have gone on there. If it is in fact a business, and I'm not sure what Lee's planned, but in essence, if it does close at five, then you might have the Christmas parties and things like that. But you're probably gonna have more peace and quiet than if you had an unruly neighbor. Just food for thought. On that scene, Rudy's of the Cape, ten o'clock, let's see, ten minutes from now, they'd be closing. It's too bad, because this meeting's not gonna be over by then, so no one can go for a cold one after that. But you could go over to the Ocean House Pizza across the street here, and you could have a beer there. And anywhere in the town center zone, which I believe that a pub or that type of restaurant could be allowed, and they all abut residential zones. So what I'm trying to make the point here is, if there's an impact being a hundred feet within a residential zone for a business that serves liquor, then why wouldn't that be the same in any other zone in Cape? So I think you're sort of setting a precedent there that really is merry or litty to, might be a spot zoning thing, and it's just picking on one business. The outside dining, or the outside drinking, what's the difference if a neighbor has a party? They can stay out until eleven o'clock, and they can make quite a bit of noise, as long as it's not up to certain. All these different things, you've got mechanisms in the planning board and the ordinances to restrict times or noise, to have a site plan which specifies that you can have this activity in a certain area. There's mechanisms there, but by setting it all up, and specifically pinpointing one business, I don't think that's a good idea. Lastly, on that note, as far as businesses, I don't think that the BA zone out in the Rudy's area is the same as the BA zone over at the Cottage Farms area. I think, you know, one is urban, one is rural. I think you might want to revisit that and just say, maybe there's gotta be two differentiations here between the zones. Point-specific topography and geography. Just food for thought. And as one of the first speakers said this evening, too, where there's some possible verbiage that's misplaced, maybe it might be a good idea, I hate to say it, and you hate to hear the word table, but it might be a good idea to revisit it, make sure that the language is all clear before any decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Good evening. I'm Tim Thompson. I live at six Pine Ridge Road. I also have a couple of small business buildings right in the town center. And I understand, and first of all, I'd like to thank all the town council members, and Michael as well, although, Michael, you get paid for this pretty well, so... And the ordinance committee for all their hard work. And just watching all my neighbors, I've got friends and neighbors that are lining up along the wall here on both sides of this, so your job, I guess that's part of what you have to do, is you've got friends and neighbors lining up on each side of this issue, and it's gotta be, it's gotta be one of the reasons why it's a tough job. But what I, the points I'd like to make, and there's been some great points, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ditto some of the ones that have already been before, is one of the, I came here to speak about the Shore Road property tonight, but one of the, before I get into that, I do want to voice my strong support for the business at Rudy's. The business, the people that run that business are town, they live in this town, they've raised their children in this town, they're very responsible. The people that I, I mean, petitions are one of those funny things, you can get a lot of people to sign them on both sides, usually. All I know is, when I'm in there on a Friday or Saturday night, there certainly is an awful lot of people that live in that area that are enjoying, enjoying that new establishment, that restaurant. So I certainly support what they're doing. I see them very responsibly running it, and being very careful about alcohol consumption, and I think they're just doing a great job. Anything we can do to help a small business owner like, like the two of them get a chance to succeed, I think it makes an awful lot of sense. The Shore Road property, the reason I'm particularly interested in that one is, I do have some rental properties over on Shore Road, and I'm constantly, I mean, there's just always people wanting to rent in that area. I think the property that is there has been tremendously improved upon. It's a building that was deteriorating, was not maybe an ISO, but was certainly on the way to an ISO, and its improvement as you come into town on that side of town is definitely very noticeable. We need more businesses in this town. It's not easy to become a small business owner in this town. Anything we can do, I think, that can make that a little easier. It does comply with our comprehensive plan. It's something that we're encouraging, we want to encourage that to happen. The planning board, one of the things that we can't forget is the planning board passed on this back in October. We've talked, people have talked a little bit about its best use. I think it really truly is best used in this eight-to-six or eight-to-five timeframe, where you've got businesses closing, people going home at night, you're not gonna have somebody sitting out on the back deck, rowdy and drinking beer and throwing beer bottles around. It's gonna be quieter at night, and not noisier. So I do think it's very much a positive. It's got a very positive impact on our town. It's not gonna, it's not gonna increase the number of kids that are gonna have to go through our school, it's not gonna have an impact there. It's gonna have a low impact on our dump. There's just a lot of low-impact pieces I think we need to take into consideration. Its value is going to be improved over time, and one of the nice things we get to do as a town, from a tax standpoint, as its value goes up, we get to tax it a little bit more. So if it goes up more in value as a small business, and housing small businesses, and bringing employees to this town, I think we have two great examples of small business owners that are trying to accomplish that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
My name is Edward Maddison, and I live at two Charles Road. I'm quartered on the outskirts of the Territorial State over here. And I'd like to point out that these maps are the same size, but they're not the same scale. And this is far larger scale, but they're also not being treated equally. I know that the comprehensive plan says that these areas shall, business development will increase without changing the configuration of the existing BA zones. This is gonna change that zone, and it's gonna change it permanently. And regardless of all the kind words that have been said about Lee and what she's done, the fact is that once it's changed, someone else can go in there, and we don't know what we've got. So all of those arguments in favor of the wonderful quietness of her shop are really Don't change the configuration of the BA zone. Treat everybody equally. Are we, do we have less rights, fewer rights than the other people in the Cape? The people that don't even know that this is Charles Road, not Charles Street? I mean, it's just totally ridiculous. I'm so tired of talking about this. In fact, I haven't really talked enough. Good night.
Thank you, Ed.
Good evening. My name is John Mitchell, Mitchell &amp; Associates, and I represent Lee Wilson. As many of you know, Lee has recently completed restoring the two-and-a-half-story Victorian-style structure to retain the architectural character while preserving the neighborhood fabric. Five fifty-three Shore Road is a property that includes an area of less than a quarter of an acre. It has frontage and direct access to Shore Road. It abuts the existing Business Aid District on both the northerly and westerly sides. It is adjacent to an existing multifamily apartment building, and it is located across Shore Road from the Irving Station, Engine One Fire Station, and the former cookie jar. The surrounding commercial businesses, all within a hundred yards, include a mixed-use retail and commercial building, Anne Veronica retail shops, and a multi-story office building. Lee is very interested in creating a mixed-use building, which would incorporate the following uses: a small boutique shop on the first floor, small office on the second floor, and possibly a studio apartment on the top floor. These are all quiet, low-impact, appropriate, and compatible uses for this part of Shore Road and town. This area of town along Shore Road has real potential. With a few added improvements to Shore Road, you could really start to create a village feeling or a traditional neighborhood with more of a pedestrian inviting environment. feeling or a traditional neighborhood with more of a pedestrian inviting environment. Mixed uses add vitality. I've heard the comment, what if the town approves the rezoning and then Lee decides to sell the property in the future? Valid comment, valid concern. My, my response would be, if you read the proposed language of the BA district, you will find it very restrictive. The guidelines and standards will be in place. A change of use would have to go through the process of planning board and site plan review, and as town councilors, you know that you have to believe and trust in the process. The ordinance committee, I believe, did a very good job in tailoring the standards of the BA district to be compatible with the nearby neighborhoods. This is a very tasteful project that will be an asset to this area, an area which is currently dominated by a gas station, a fire station, and an apartment building. Lee has extended her hand to the neighbors early on in the process, but when some people equate change to bad, it is almost impossible to change minds. I strongly encourage you to embrace this zone change, which will enhance this area, and as often the case, may even motivate improvements to existing properties. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, Carl Ditterich, 500 Ocean House Road. Don't have enough information to have an opinion on 551, but it kind of sad to me and confuses me, though, all this chit-chat. I'm still waiting for a common sense committee. 100 years ago, thousands of people came to Cape Elizabeth, thousands of them, every weekend night. Then they went down to the casino, they gambled, they drank. It hasn't affected the town. It seems like it's now changed into a beautiful little town. I sit out in front of my front yard, and I see all these people running by and biking by. I was thinking about taking up biking and running, but I want to get my bike bought in Cape Elizabeth, fixed in Cape Elizabeth, maybe buy a pair of sneakers. I don't want to have to go to Walmart. All the retail stores in Cape Elizabeth would all fit inside the new Walmart. I'm not sure what the, you know, so everyone gets in their cars, the green town, everybody wants to be green, recycled, but then they'll have to get in their HUVs and Hummers and even a little Prius, isn't he? But they have to drive out of town to get all the services. I don't understand it. If we want to cut down the traffic, why don't we just close Fort Williams? Let the grass grow, save the money? Traffic would be whoop in the summer. It seems like there's just a few chosen businesses, and that's it. If you weren't grandfathered in, then, then you're done. I'm losing my little credit union, and so now I have to drive to South Portland. I don't really want to drive to South Portland. I'd like it all to be right here. I don't see why, if we're the, the best education, the well-to-do town, why don't we have well-to-do good little businesses for our good little people? I don't, you know, I, I just, it, it really confused me. We're a town of lawyers, doctors, you know, if you get hurt here, it's great. Boom! There's the doctor, there's the lawyer. But where's the services? I don't, I don't understand it. I don't want to drive over to, to the mall and Walmart, or even down to Mill Creek. Why can't we have some businesses here? It seems like it's a big battle. Nobody, NIMBY, nobody wants it in their backyard. I understand all that. But things change, this and that. Some of the businesses were there long before the people bought their houses, even if they lived in a place bought 35 years ago. There was a business there 40 years ago. It's just sad that we're, we're so well-educated, yet we're bickering and this and that, we can't have little businesses in our little nice town. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Please, please.
That was nice. Lighten it up a little. I'm Lee Wilson. I live at 82 Two Lights Road, and I am the owner of 553 Shore Road. When we first started this process, which will be four years this September, all we saw and wanted was this great house that needed saving, and yes, we were told it could be a couple of hard years, but we felt it was worth it. It deserved to be preserved, and we, as all the other prospective buyers, wondered why it had ever been, had never been included in the BA zone in previous comprehensive plans. And I think it did just fall through the cracks because no one did stand up and give it that effort. It's a hard effort. All we hear in this town is we need more business. I don't want to reiterate too much, but we, we hear it, yet we turn our backs on it. We make it near impossible for someone to come in and open a new one, let alone try and make it thrive. My cheeks are rosy, too. No one wants it in their backyard, and yet you can never change that. But if it's, if it's not here in this already existing BA district, then where? You have to start somewhere. This makes a lot of sense, and I hope you can see that. So that was four years ago, two years past our expectations. We have rented it weekly in the summer, pretty well, not totally successfully, but we've hung in there, and that'll pay for the shortages that we suffer in the winter. The three winter tenants that we have have not stayed for the whole winter, but made it through, kept it heated. And I have been very selective in who I rent to, for obvious reasons. I have a big interest in this building, too, and in this neighborhood, believe it or not. And I could do that because I knew it was a short-term situation that I expected and made provisions for. But if it turns out to be a long-term situation, I won't have the luxury of being so selective. Knowing the restrictions on business versus the restrictions on residential, and there aren't many on residential, you know what this is going to mean for the property and for your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. I gotta remind you, you only wanted to make one point.
That's correct.
Okay. And I'd ask you to make it briefly.
Yes, all right. I'd like to distribute a map. This is the zoning map that was downloaded from the, the town website. I had not given part two of the comments with regard to the change of the zone for 553, thinking that was going to be a separate and a subsequent public hearing, but it seems like it's all together. Here's the letter that goes with it, and here's the one point. You'll see on the map that we've just distributed, which is downloaded from the website, you'll see the structures that are on there. This map doesn't show the structures. This is Ms. Nichols's property that abuts the 553 property, and then, of course, here's the Sanford property on the other side. The map shows the zoning line goes through her home. You see the structure on the line. That when you're in her home, that means that the commercial side, the commercial part of her property, is less than the residential side, because her backyard is larger than the front yard. I don't know what this map is, but it's not the official zoning map. And the reason why this is so significant is because you don't have a, this residential property, 553, next to a full commercial zone. It's only a piece. You can't rezone the part back here, which is actually shorter, to a commercial, because you're going to have spot zoning. And that's the basic point, is you're creating a little island of land between one residential zone and another residential zone. And that is the important point that we wanted to make sure you knew. Of course, you know there's been a lot of confusion with Ms. Nichols's property, where sometimes it's been changed, oh, in the course of the past year. Her assessment records would say it's commercial, then it would say it's residential, then it's part commercial, part residential, without notice to her. And the zoning map has changed from being commercial this way, residential this side, it's now been flipped this way if we accept it as the official zone. Most of her property is residential, and so you have a spot zoning issue. I was asked to address the legal issues.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you letting me have that final point.
I have just seconded my suggested changes to the ordinance, if you'd like. And my wife wanted me to point out that I misspoke, we're at 597 Shore Road. So I apparently said 557.
Thank you very much. Others who would like to speak in the public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to the BA zone?
Good evening. My name's Jamie Wagner, from off of Two Lights Road on Hanaford Cove. I just got here a little late, I'm sorry. So I don't know if it's been addressed at all, but I spoke with Mr. Backer by email earlier in the week, and I just had some concern about the proposed amendment to the definition of the term restaurant, and I don't have it with me here, but I believe it limits the sales percentage to 25% for alcoholic beverages. And I mean, my interpretation of that amendment would be to prevent Cape Elizabeth from having any bars. So I'd be concerned about that as a restriction on further development of business in Cape Elizabeth. And I, personally, I think that Cape Elizabeth is, could use one or two bars, and it's a long drive into Portland, and I've heard many Cape residents say the same thing, that it'd be convenient to have a bar in town. So I'll submit some written suggestion, but I'd like to put that on the agenda for you all to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Peter Carter, since retirement, I reside at Rudy's, if I'm not sleeping. If I'm not there when you get there, just wait a minute. Skip Murray was up earlier speaking about his last inquiry and his gravel pit that's located in a residential zone. In the 10 years I spent on this town's planning board, the most restrictive business was always his and his father's, within the amount of conditions and restrictions we placed on his permit to keep operating. In looking over what Rudy's had had to go through the last three years, they are now the number-one business as far as restrictions and conditions on their permit of use. In regards to the earlier gentleman saying about we could use a couple of extra bars in Cape Elizabeth, I'd like to offer you the following historical fact, which I promise you is true. The first ongoing meeting, scheduled meeting of Alcoholics Anonymous ever held in the state of Maine was held here in Cape Elizabeth. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else would like to speak in the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 9:13. Item number 97-2009, we have before us zoning ordinance amendments and a zoning map, proposed zoning map change. Would someone care to put a motion on the floor? David?
I move that the council table this matter until our next monthly, regular monthly meeting, which would be in June. And in the interim, we schedule this for another workshop to give us an opportunity to discuss and debate all the comments we've heard tonight, and make our best efforts to tweak where tweaking is appropriate, and accept where accepting is appropriate, and come back with a version in June that is modified based on comments that we've heard tonight.
Was that a second?
That was a second.
Okay. We have a motion and second to table this item until our June meeting, with a workshop to occur before that meeting, to further discuss some of the, a little background information, we did have a workshop on this item, and Planner Maureen O'Meara did a tremendous job in walking us through all the proposed amendments. And there were several issues during that walkthrough that we had some concerns about, and we just didn't have time to talk about them that night, and so we, we kind of sensed we wanted to hear from the public to help, help us fine-tune our comments, and that's the reason, I presume, for Counselor Backer's motion and, and the second. Discussion on the motion?
There's no discussion on table motion.
I'm sorry, you're right. All in favor of tabling? Show it to be unanimous. Thank you. Item 98-2009, Shoreland Zoning and Zoning Map Amendments. I'll give the, I'll give the chamber two minutes to clear. Those people who would like to leave now?
David, your motion, I only, everything you said after that, I couldn't.
And I will call the meeting back to order?
Yes. Good comments. Are you in time?
I'm talking. Well, that was our conflict.
Yes.
What happened, all the people?
Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. Please, quiet in the chamber.
You just had, like, a conversation with a, with a, and, and.
Thank you. Item 98-2009, Shoreland Zoning and Zoning Map Amendments. Do I have a motion? David?
I move that we refer the proposed Shoreland Zoning and Zoning Map Amendments to the ordinance committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Show it to be unanimous. Item number 99-2009, Solid Waste Ordinance.
Go ahead, Ann. Ann?
Excuse me. I move that we set a public hearing for Monday, June 8, 2009, at 7:30 PM at the Town Hall on the proposed revisions to the Health and Sanitation Ordinance, providing for a substitute Article II relating to solid waste and recycling.
Can I ask the people in the back of the room to please leave the building? Step outside if you're continuing to talk.
I second Ann's motion.
Moved and seconded. I'm sorry, Ann.
That's quite all right.
It really bugged me.
That's, I'm glad you spoke up. Thank you.
Thanks. Moved and seconded to refer this item to public hearing on June 8. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? In unanimous, thank you. Item number 100-2009, the Town Center Intersection. You will recall that on November 10, 2008, the town council referred to this meeting, this meeting tonight, the disposition of the. could be asked to reimburse Maine Department of Transportation $133,835 if the project does not move ahead by August of 2016. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor? I would like to put a motion on the floor. I would like to move that this issue be tabled until the November 2009 Town Council meeting. In the past few weeks, we have had no fewer than two more accidents at the Town Center Intersection. Fortunately, neither involved serious personal injury. But it's apparent to me that some of the passive measures which have been installed are questionable in their effectiveness at this point, and I think it deserves a little more time to build an experience as to how these minor things are working. As I said, when this issue first came before us, citizen safety is a priority for me. It's about dollars and cents. If, God forbid, we had a fatality at that intersection, and I knew that at one time I had had the ability to perhaps prevent it, and I consciously chose not to, I would submit my resignation from the Town Council that day or the next on the Town Manager's desk. I'd find it very difficult to live with myself. I don't think there's a need to hurry this. I don't think we need to keep this, to dismiss this right now. I prefer to see us watch that intersection for a while longer, see if we can measure some improvement there. I don't think we can measure improvement there based on the two accidents that have just occurred there yet, but I'm not willing to let that money go at this point. So...
We need a second to the motion.
Yeah. So, my motion is that we table this until the November 2009 Town Council meeting.
I second your motion.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion?
There is no discussion on tabling.
I'm sorry. You're right again. You're still right.
If I might, there is discussion on the advisability of the date that you table a motion to.
Okay.
The condition that's set to a tabling motion.
There is?
Yeah.
Well, could I ask a question then, as to why November? And, I mean, that would be a year from the time it was originally tabled. It would give us, it would be a full year.
Can I ask a question? Because he got to ask a question.
You're looking at the timing.
Sorry. What type of things are we going to do to watch? I mean, I'm assuming that we want to assess in some way to, before we get to that November meeting, what might we be doing, actions might we be taking? Any thoughts?
Well, I think if we can keep records of accidents, near misses, those types of things.
So, the police department will do that, or somebody will be assigned to do that?
Somebody would have to be assigned to do that. But the motion on the floor is to table until November 2009. Moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion to table?
I had a question.
What question?
Um, I wish we had had an opportunity to talk a little more before we tabled it, but...
All voted down.
Oh.
Vote down the motion to table.
Well, I'm not saying I don't want to prolong it, I just want to talk about it more. But I guess I can't, I'm not allowed to talk about it right now. Okay.
All in favor of the motion to table?
I had a question.
What question?
Um, I wish we had had an opportunity to talk a little more before we tabled it, but...
All voted down.
Oh.
Vote down the motion to table.
Well, I'm not saying I don't want to prolong it, I just want to talk about it more. But I guess I can't, I'm not allowed to talk about it right now. Okay.
All in favor of the motion to table? One, two, three, four opposed. Three. The motion to table carries.
Can I just ask a quick question, Jim, now? I guess I didn't interpret any of this verbiage in our memo that we would be forfeiting funds right now, but could we get some clarification, Mike, on that? In other words, was there a need to act? It seems like the deadline is 2016.
The, there were many, this was a letter, if I might, Mr. Chairman? This was a letter that was written by Kat Fuller at MDOT, who's the head of planning, to John Duncan, who's the director of PAX. You know, there were many different questions in this letter. And some of it seems to be contradictory to the letters we received earlier. You know, so, I, you know, I'm hesitant to say exactly what Ms. Fuller meant in every instance. You know, and it's also clear to me that, you know, regardless of what action the council takes, PAX might take an independent action. And, you know, and if I get wind of that, I will advise the council of that. But I'll be in touch with PAX tomorrow, let them know of the decision, and request that they honor the council's desire to have until November 2009 without reallocating the money.
Thank you for keeping us informed, Mike.
Can I ask a procedural question? Is there a way to make a motion that enables you to have a conversation before you make a motion to table something? Because, I mean, I grew up in a family where you were always allowed to talk.
I asked for a motion. Nobody said anything, so I made a motion.
Okay. It just leaves me frustrated. Rather have, make a motion that gives the ability for the council to talk, because in general, I feel like we do a pretty good job of working out, and then we can vote to postpone it, rather than a table that stops all discussion, which leaves me feeling quite frustrated.
Sorry for your frustration.
Well, and I would just echo that. I have seen some times where somebody in the council says, "I'm contemplating a motion to table, but here are my thoughts." Just because, I might have voted for your motion, Jim, I just didn't really feel like I had enough background or understanding.
Okay.
So...
Well, no. We're all working together.
Okay. Item number 101-2009, Ottawa Road Pump Station Combined Sewer Overflow. Mike, would you like to give us a little background on this, please?
I will, very, very briefly. What you have before you is a four-page agreement, of which the fourth page is just signature lines, that's between South Portland and Cape Elizabeth and Portland Water District, trying to deal with a combined sewer overflow on Ottawa Road. What combined sewer overflow is, is when there's particularly aggressive storms, lots of water comes down in a very short period of time, the pump station doesn't handle it all, and what you get is extremely diluted wastewater combined with tons and tons of rainwater, millions of gallons, in fact, of rainwater that goes directly into the bay. The Environmental Protection Agency of the United States, as well as the DEP, and many citizens are concerned about combined sewer overflows and would like it to stop. We've been working, actually now for a couple of years, with the Portland Water District and with a engineering firm, Wright Pierce, on dealing with this combined sewer overflow. What will happen, if this is approved, is that Wright Pierce, the engineering firm, will go forward doing some analysis, doing some studies of potential solutions to deal with this problem. We've already applied to the DEP for a, what they call a NIPD's permit. I think I sent a copy of, or I put it in your boxes, it might be up front in your boxes, a copy of the draft permit. But this, you know, I would like to say, this has the potential eventually to be well in excess of a million dollars in cost to address this particular issue, knowing the physical constraints we have in that area, knowing the potential requirements. So, it's not an insignificant issue. And it's also, you know, an issue how it's going to be paid for, because, you know, even though there's sewer lines, most of the water is not coming from sewerage, it's coming from other places. So, it wouldn't be necessarily just a general fund issue. For this study work and analysis work, the share is one-third to the city of South Portland and two-thirds to the Portland Water District and the town of Cape Elizabeth. I'd like to point out that the Portland Water District's share is 100% assumed by the town of Cape Elizabeth. So, we will actually have two-thirds of the cost of this particular study, and that's based on a preliminary analysis of where the problem seems to lie and where the flows are coming from. When I saw that, I questioned the Water District at length about it. We had a conference call upon it, and upon reflection and advice from the Water District, it's a very fair allocation to the town of Cape Elizabeth. You know, whatever work would eventually have to be done as a result of this would be shared, any joint work would be shared, the two-thirds, one-third, but there's a lot of individual work that could be done in each of the two municipalities, and that work would be 100% at the cost of that individual municipality, or of the homeowners who are, who are in fact contributing to the flows going to the system with such things as roof drains and solid drains and some of those type things. You know, already today, we started construction on a little project on Oakhurst Road, replacing a line, trying to, you know, deal with this issue. It is expensive, it does have the potential to be expensive. We are, for the first time, actually going to have a license to overboard discharge. One of the major issues with the DEP is it hasn't been licensed. And, you know, the preliminary review, the Water District is more the expert on this than we are, they're beginning to look at the draft agreement, but my first read of it, the draft permit provides that it's pretty much in thinking what we thought it was going to be. We're particularly pleased that there weren't real early deadlines, and that it gives us really a couple of years to study this. And it does take a couple of years, because you need to really look at where the flows are coming from over a period of time. But it's a, it could be a potentially very expensive challenge for the town of Cape Elizabeth.
Mr. Chair, could I ask the manager a question?
Yeah.
Mike, I just wanted to make sure I understood, when you talked about the costs, a portion 33% to South Portland, correct?
And two-thirds to Cape Elizabeth.
Well, it says 67% jointly to the town and the water district.
Yeah.
So, does that mean we each get half of that, or?
The district, it does, it's immaterial. The district charges back for Cape Elizabeth sewer work 100% of their cost to Cape Elizabeth.
Okay. I just, I didn't understand that. Thank you.
Skip, we need to dig a hole somewhere.
And if I may ask a question of our manager?
Sure.
I'm reluctant to ask this, but the consequence of not authorizing you to sign this agreement is what?
I would imagine it would take a little while, but you'd probably, you know, first have a visit from the Conservation Law Foundation suing the state of Maine for not, that would probably be the first, actually, they would sue the state of Maine for not enforcing the federal law. And that's, you know, that's not a negative comment, but the Conservation Law Foundation, they're an interest group that looks after the, to ensure that the environmental laws, particularly, they particularly focus on some of these wastewater issues, that they've already been aggressively seeking compliance in the state of Maine, you know, within their rights under the law.
Then ultimately, does the town of Cape Elizabeth get sued by DEP?
It would probably be more fines and consent. DEP usually looks for consent decrees, but there could be fines as well.
But this is mandated by federal law, right?
Yes, not this particular agreement, but the...
No, no.
But the addressing...
The CSO...
With best practical manners, and I don't know if that's exact wording, this combined sewer overflow, it is a mandate of these, of the law, yeah.
Michael?
Yeah.
I have a question. Just because I'm trying to get this clear in my own mind. You know, I will be supporting this, but I wonder, are there mechanisms to divert this rainwater? From what your description was, it sounds like there's, the bulk of the problem stems from rainwater runoff. Is there a way to deal with that, other than putting it into the sewer?
True, true, the chairman, the, you know, what we'd really be looking at is stormwater separation, that we install stormwater systems that, in essence, pick up all of this material that is now going to the sewer. You know, things go into the sewer, you know, simply you have a manhole cover, and it goes in. The, we discovered on Oakhurst Road, the why, the main reason we're doing that one right now, is there was a two-by-four in the middle of the sewer pipe. How did that happen? We don't know. Did you see the two-by, were you down there?
Yeah.
You haven't got to the two-by-four yet? Yeah.
Maybe there's a two-by-four in this one.
No, this is, this takes a lot of the flow in the North Shore area, and, you know, and it works itself, you know, back through eventually to a, there's actually a sewer line that's a dedicated Cape Elizabeth line that also picks up Drew Road, that goes all the way back to the treatment plant in South Portland, down their city streets and whatever, and it's nothing but transporting Cape Elizabeth's sewerage down to the South Portland treatment plant. It's a pretty amazing system, but, you know, what this really is, most of the flow that goes into this area comes from Cape Elizabeth. There's a little bit of it that comes from South Portland. But South Portland, the Drew Road, there's real huge issues with those homes that have looked, you know, South Portland's even looked at maybe getting, so that they could pump that flow somewhere else, so they could be done with the problem. So, it's important we work closely with our neighbors, so... But hopefully Wright Pierce will do the analysis, and I don't remember exactly, they got a proposal from Wright Pierce, I don't remember the exact amount, but, you know, it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Other questions of the manager, before we put a motion on the floor?
In the low hundreds of thousands.
Would someone like to put a motion on the floor, Ann?
I move that we authorize the Town Manager to sign an agreement with the city of South Portland and with the Portland Water District to coordinate plans to address the combined sewer overflow on Drew Road at the South Portland Cape Elizabeth property line, boundary line.
Moved and seconded.
I just wanted to, I really thank you for your questions on this. It's an important issue with potential long-term liability, and, you know, at some point, when we get over other workshops, it wouldn't hurt for you to have a workshop on this, that we cover this issue with some professional consultants there that can better answer questions.
Thank you also for providing reasonable answers to our questions. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item number 102-2009, Underground Buried Cable Permit. Central Maine Power has requested an underground utility permit in the right-of-way for a buried cable on Old Ocean House Road for approximately 50 feet near the Boat Cove Road.
So, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion? David?
Does this have any adverse impact on the abutting property owners? And if so, have they been consulted on this?
The abutting property owner, when you look at the map, it's the person who's going to benefit on Boat Cove Road, that law owner.
So, there's no adverse impact?
It's all underground, anyway, yeah. And it's all in the right-of-way, and then if you look at the map, it's right that little section of Old Ocean House Road where it abuts Boat Cove Road.
Other discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor? We offer our citizens a second opportunity to discuss items that were not on tonight's Your chance, guys. Seeing none. Before we adjourn, I would like to announce future meetings and events. Tomorrow is the official vote for the citizen validation of the school budget, as it was approved by the Town Council. So, if you haven't voted already, make sure you get to the polls tomorrow. The polls will be open at 7:00 AM and closing at 8:00 PM at the high school. This Thursday, May 14, we have a workshop, primarily energy-oriented. We'll be receiving or discussing the Alternative Energy Committee's report, and also the energy audit that they engaged. And we'll also be discussing the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement Resolution, as was proposed by Cool Cape. On May 25, I'm happy to say that we will once again have our Memorial Day Parade and Observations. Jim Cox has headed up that effort for many years now, is it 10 years, approximately, plus or minus? Indicated this year that he no longer wanted to take on that duty, but Jim Hubner, citizen... citizen and veteran, has taken up the torch and will organize the event. There'll be further announcement of that on the website, I'm sure. On June 8th, 2009, is our next Town Council meeting. We will have, as you heard tonight, a, a public hearing at that meeting. June 15th, we have a tentative workshop agenda, which will discuss the Shore Road Pathway Committee Report, the Fort Williams Advisory Commission's Goddard Mansion Report, and we will discuss the council goal's status on how we're doing against the goals that we'd set at the beginning of the year. July 13th, 2009, is our regular Town Council meeting, and also on August 10th, we will have a regular Town Council meeting. Unless there are any other comments from the council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor of adjourn?
That's not to people.
Unanimous. 9:40 PM. Thank you very much. Thank you.